Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, Resolution twenty-two dash one oh five. A motion by be resolved that the town board, excuse me, the town of Scholar Falls Board authorizes the town supervisor to act as fair housing officer for the town's Office of Community Renewal, Community Development Block Grant Project one zero four seven H R three zero six dash two-two Housing Rehabilitation Program. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
And Mr. Facto? All right, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes, all approved. Twenty-two dash one oh six. A motion by be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls designates the town supervisor as the ADA coordinator and to adopt the following. Notice under the Americans with Disabilities Act grievance procedures for the same and grievance forms for the same. Um, just so everybody's aware what this is, C D B G, the grant itself, um, a lot of times we, in the past, every grant we've had in the past, they still had, there's a couple of new ones on here, but we've always had to have most of these positions filled, but they've always put a name to them. So by changing it just to the title, in case the title of who holds the position, the supervisor changes, we don't have to keep adopting the new resolutions from now on, because we'll just, unless you guys want to change what title is responsible for. So that's under discussion, I should do that after we get the motion. So a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Bruno?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Nguyen? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, one oh, twenty-two dash one oh seven. A motion by be resolved that the town of Scholar Falls Town Board authorizes to adopt the Section Three Plan to authorize the town supervisor to sign the Section Three Plan and to designate the town supervisor to act as the Section Three Coordinator for Section Three Matters, including the town's Office of Community Renewal, Community Development Block Grant Program. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Facto, be ya. Just quick. All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All approved. All right, twenty-two dash one oh eight. Motion by be resolved that the town of Scholar Falls Town adopts policies and procedures manual which include the subrecipient monitoring policy and report template for the town's Office of Community Renewal, Community Development Block Grant Project one zero four seven H R three zero six dash two-two Housing Rehabilitation Program. Can I get a motion? And Mr. Bruno? Second. All right, good, Howard, now we get, now we're second, uh, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, uh, Resolution twenty-two dash...
One oh nine.
Uh, motion be, be it resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls authorize the hiring tavern Ryan and Kearney, uh, William Ryan Junior for the purpose of, uh, excuse me, for the proposed Marshall Water District project. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Nguyen? I'll second that one. Discussion?
Yes, um, I plan on voting no, as I did a month ago. Uh, reason being, this attorney is an Albany-based attorney, and I think we can get a local attorney to deal with this, so that's my reason for deciding to vote no. Thank you.
I appreciate your own thought. Um, basically, I will tell you, this attorney is the number one rated in New York State, you can look it up on the website, and this is what he deals with, is water districts. Uh, so he's utilized all over the place, so his name's going to be out there. If you look him up on the web, you will find he's right up at the top, if not the top one. Uh, so we're very lucky to have him. Um, that's all I got for discussion. Um, his, I would, I should say this, his hourly rate is two forty-five per hour per hourly rate, which is, I think, we're paying our, one of our attorneys, two seventy-five an hour right now.
Is that from the time you leave Albany, New York, to get back?
Well, ninety-nine percent of this work will be done computer, back-to-back. I would, I would suggest that he is here like he did for the, the final public hearing or things of that nature.
That's like, two years ago, he came up one time.
Yeah, when we, when we did the water district extension for the Marshall Water District, just so that he is able to answer questions at the public hearing and stuff like that.
But I mean, if we had, you know, at that time, if we had zoning, he could accomplish the same thing without billing us.
Yeah, and I, I think, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I believe that we can do that now, without violating the open medium.
They did change it back, I believe you're right, Kevin.
I believe so. Yeah, that's something that we're going to try to incorporate more often than not.
Sure.
Sometimes it's really handy to have the guy right here in the room, but we don't always need that.
Sure.
And that way, we wouldn't have to have the, the upcharge that you're talking about if he had to drive down here for expenses. I agree with you.
Okay, so, anyway, that's...
All right, okay, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
No.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Um, next one is twenty-two dash one ten. A motion by be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls authorized that the supervisor to sign the service agreement with employee assistance services contract attached, retroactive date of November first of twenty-twenty-one through October thirty-first of, uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, with an agreed fee of fifty dollars per annum, per covered employees, there are six, and a DOT random testing selection setup fee, one time of one hundred bucks. We've been using these people forever, I don't know how this fell through the cracks, I'll take the, the heat for that, but, uh, we, they've still been providing service, but we didn't have a contract, so this will just, um, again, put us back in a contract with them, so if I get a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
And Mr. Bruno, any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Uh, Resolution, uh, twenty-two, I can't read that right.
One one one.
One one one. Okay. Uh, motion by, whereas the twenty-twenty-three Association of Towns annual meeting is scheduled to be held in New York City on February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two of twenty-twenty-three, and whereas Reginald Facto and Howard Nguyen would like to attend, and money is allotted in the budgets of, uh, Reginald Facto and Howard Nguyen to attend conference, be it hereby resolved that the town board authorizes the attendance of said meeting and expenses incurred in attending the conference are chargeable to the contractual account for each department as allocated in the budget, and is further resolved that the supervisor is authorized to advance funds for pre-registration, purchase of, uh, the travel, hotel accommodations, and meals for said conference. Um, I'll wait till we get a motion.
Motion.
By Mr. Bruno? I'll second it.
Just, uh, just, just a discussion on that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I was just kind of wondering how we, we can do this, seeing the motion was put together like that, because I certainly can't vote on my own, travel, and probably, Mr. Newton probably shouldn't either, so, I mean, I'm not trying to get technical with you?
No.
But shouldn't we break the resolution up into two?
We never did before.
There's no need, and, and you can vote for yourself if you're running for office, so you can still vote to pass a resolution. Um, in this case, I don't think anybody's going to think that you're doing anything unethical when we're doing it in front of God and everybody, and you're, you want to go, right?
Oh, I, I, I...
So if you want to go, just say, you know, like I said, vote yes, I, it's not, it's not like you're voting on something that would be a real ethical issue here, we're just, it's, it's been past practice, before we send anybody on training, that we do a resolution to, uh, adopt that, uh, the names of those participants prior to them going down. And in this case, especially because we have to put the funding up front, I want to make sure I'm covered if I give them checks for that, so that's basically what this is.
Okay, my second thing is, a few months ago, and I spoke to Vern, and I spoke to Mike about this, is that there was a public statement that any volunteer of be it assessment review board, ethics board, planning board, zoning board of appeals, that wanted to attend this, could attend. And I received an email from Mr. M.D., zoning board member, and I believe he sent the email to everyone on the board, I guess, and basically, I was here the night that it was made, there was a statement made. Kevin, I, I think you've made it, is that basically anyone in these appointed positions that wanted to go, and I know Mr. M.D. contacted Mr. Dorance and maybe Mrs. Hamel, I'm not sure, multiple people, asking that he could go. So, I know I spoke to Vern about it, and Mike, Mike was in favor of it.
And I don't have the tape in front of me that said that, and I said to everybody to go, but I do want everybody to go that is allowed to go, okay? Um, I am big on training, that's one of the biggest contentions we had over the last three years is, you know, the, the, the money spent on training, um, especially in-person training, because you're going to get more out of the classroom than you have, well, as far as I'm concerned, in my life experience, than what you're going to get off of a computer and listening to. Uh, just the stimulation of conversation alone, it might be a question you may not even ever have thought to ask, that somebody else does in the room that you're getting information. Uh, unfortunately, in Mr. M.D.'s case, there was no money put into the budget for training on the Z B A board. Um, I'm not in charge of putting that into the budget, that each department, or their chair of each department would do that, same thing for, uh, the planning boards, if, uh, they wanted to go. I know when, uh, Mr. Wachowski was on the board, he used to always make sure that he left, I don't know, I think he was chair of the board for a while there, and he put it himself, but even when Frank was, I think that he always was, you know? Um, the problem becomes budgeting at that point, not that we, or I wouldn't want him to go, is that the money was not budgeted for. So, I did talk to Mr. Dorance, and this is really getting in that area we probably shouldn't discuss here, but I did talk to him about allowing him to go to the training that I would suggest that everybody else has gone to, and that's the one in Saratoga, from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. Uh, there, at that training, they actually do have a, um, a basic get-your-feet-right course also, so it gets, gets those participants, um, on the right track, and it's starting at the foundation of the building blocks, so that maybe when you take the more advanced training, you'll understand enough to know what classes that you would want to take and what would benefit you. I'm sure that, I know Sherman has been down to the city, and I, I know you have too also, Howard's been down there. Some of the things that we do if we go down and there's more than one of us, if we try to get together to make sure that we're not all taking the same classes, so that, um, we get the most out of the training, because it doesn't make a lot of sense for, you know, three of us to attend one class when the other two could be attending two other classes and get some more information. So that's some of the stuff that we do when down there. But, uh, I don't want to make any hard feelings, I don't tell a specific chair or any board what to do with their funding, and, uh, it was not my decision. The only way we could have did it is with, uh, taking it out of the, uh, the legal funds. And as you're going to see in a little bit here, we got to do a transfer, a budget transfer to cover the cost of those this year, so he didn't want to take it out of his legal budget. And that's pretty much it.
Would it be possible to table this motion until Mr. Prati would be here? And I believe he'll be here on January third, so would it be okay to do that? Would anyone support that move of doing?
When you got the, the chair of that board saying no, I'm not going to tell him what to do with his funding, I'll tell you that right now. And like I said, this here, even if we approve these tonight, it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't, you know, introduce another one if something changes between now and, I think you're referring to the organization meeting on the third.
Yes, I was, I was.
I know, I wouldn't see where one has anything to do with the other, it'd be on our...
Kevin, I know that in past years, with this type of motion, there's, there's always been a delegate assigned.
Yep.
And...
That's next meeting, Reggie, because to make sure that people were going, they should decide. I've got it for next meeting in January.
Oh, you're going to point me? Great.
I'm just saying.
For sure.
It'll probably be, yeah. Which will prolong your trip, as like you did mine, for an extra hour and a half, but you will never get back.
Okay.
Okay, we ready?
I am.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, these are budget transfers. Um, twenty-two dash one one two. Be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls approves the following general fund budget transfers, uh, from line eight point one nine nine zero point four zero zero contingency account of six hundred dollars to eight point six four one zero point four zero zero, uh, publicity contingency expense. Can I get a motion?
Finish it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't realize there was a bunch more in the bottom. Uh, to cover the cost of, uh, the Christmas entertainment, uh, uh, form, excuse me, firm, eight point one nine nine zero point four zero zero contingency account to eight point eight zero two zero point one zero zero, planning and personal services. Um, to eight point eight zero two zero point four zero zero, planning and contractual expenses of two sixty, uh, to eight point eight nine eight nine point four zero zero, community services, contract, uh, expenses, continued, um, contingency, contractual expenses, thanks, one hundred, and then, uh, eight point three nine eight nine point four zero zero drug testing, contingency contractual expenses of one fifty, and eight point one six six zero point four zero zero, central store room contingency expenditures. I think we got them all at once for a thousand. So can I get a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Facto? I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Yeah, we're all about it. Resolution twenty-two dash one one three. A motion by be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls approves the following highway fund budget transfers from D eight point five one three zero point two zero zero machinery and equipment to D eight point five one three zero point four zero zero machinery contingent, contractual, excuse me, uh, three thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
And Mr. Bruno?
Second.
Can I get in, and Mr. Nguyen? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, Resolution twenty-two one one four. A motion by be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls approves the following general fund budget transfers from W M dot zero nine zero nine point zero zero zero, fund balance unreserved, uh, to W M point eight three one zero point four zero zero administrative contingency expenditures, uh, is seven thousand, to cover the, the expenses of, uh, LaBerge to date. I'll make the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Nguyen?
Just a quick discussion on, Kevin?
Go ahead.
Um, this transfer has absolutely nothing to do with the Trombley Water Project, does it?
No.
Okay. Good enough.
Roll call.
Mr. Bruno?
Yeah.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, twenty, Resolution twenty-two dash one one five. Motion by be resolved that the town board of the town of Scholar Falls approves the following general fund budget transfers from W M L dot zero nine zero nine dot zero zero zero, fund balance unreserved, to W M L point eight three one zero point four zero zero administrative contractual expenses, uh, ten thousand five hundred is what the amount is, and again, it's to cover expenses for LaBerge to date. And again, I'll make the motion.
That's Macy Lane, correct?
No, this is mostly all, um, or...
It was W M L's Macy Lane.
Yeah, yeah, that is Macy Lane. So it's all the engineering.
Yeah, so it's same thing, right? More Simbo Water only?
Yeah, well, this is actually Macy Lane.
Oh, okay, got it.
For the engineering, for Macy Lane.
Okay, I understand, okay.
Second.
And Mr. Nguyen?
Nope, Vern.
Oh, Vern?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. There, I got one left. All right, Resolution twenty-two dash one one six. A motion by be resolved that the town of Scholar Falls Town Board acknowledges the resignation of Town Councilman Howard Nguyen, effective date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at twenty-three point fifty-nine point fifty-nine. As much as I hate to, I'm going to make the motion.
Second.
All right, second is by Mr. Bruno. Um, discussion?
Yes. Um, I knew this was probably coming, and, uh, I, what I'm wondering is that I have concerns with the appointment of an interim town board member for the year twenty-twenty-three. Now, the same situation just occurred in a town in Essex County, same thing, a month ago.
All right.
And the way they handled it, is it for a vacancy to fill that seat? What they did, they advertised it, put it in the paper, and any town resident would then submit, or resonate, and it would be then reviewed by the town board.
But I would ask you to just keep that for the work session or the next meeting on the third, if we get to appoint somebody, because this resolution, my friend, is just to accept his resignation only. That's all this is.
Okay.
It's not, it's not appointing anybody as a, yeah, which this board could decide to leave at vacant if they wanted, so...
Right, we could.
So I, I would just caution on doing that.
Okay, I guess I spoke out of turn, I apologize.
Until we got to this. I do have some discussion, though. Um, I would like to thank Mr. Newton for all the years of service that he's given to the town as a city council member, and as far as I'm concerned, you will be sorely missed as a member of this board, and I appreciate everything that you did for the town with years.
Thank you, I've enjoyed sitting on the board.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Epstein.
Oh. Mr. Um, Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. Yeah, all right, we end of that. All right. Claims. Okay, the claims, uh, audit only are going to be two zero two two zero one four nine zero through two zero two two zero one five zero two. Uh, claims, two zero two two zero one five two one through two zero two two zero one six two eight. Payroll claims, two zero two two zero one four seven six through two zero two two zero one four, uh, four eight nine, and two zero two two zero one five zero three through two zero two two zero one five two zero. Uh, general fund, twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Highway, twenty-six thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Audit only, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Woods Mills Water, three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Morrisonville Water, nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents. Macy Lane Water, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
If motion, we hear the claims.
Motion by Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second is by Mr. Bruno. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right. All right, actually, it went pretty good. Um, so I'll open this up for a short time, like I say, it's between holidays, I don't want to keep anybody here longer than they have to, um, but for public forum and addresses, if anybody has anything that they would like to ask for, I'll try to answer them.
I have a couple of questions that I want to get on record, uh, some of them were just yesterday now, so, uh, I just want to read them all out and then kind of address them, I'll reread them as you address each one. Uh, it's mostly about the, uh, webpage. First, I want to know, um, was it ever suggested that the town should standardize its emails on the website so that they all had the same ending such as supervisor@skylarfallsnewark.com?
Yes.
Second, if, uh, if it was ever suggested, why wasn't it implemented? Third, standard... Unified standardized emails are linked to and stored on webpage cer- server, and the reason that...
Is that a question?
No, I'm going to, uh, uh, unified standardized emails are linked and stored on the server because of public records. Uh, what is being done in order to preserve the contents of those emails as public records? And then, lastly, or next to lastly, if someone foils one of those emails that should be available via public information, what steps are taken to locate that email, and how are these emails, which are, I believe, town documents and public records, how are they being stored and protected and separated from the personal emails? And then, lastly, were you ever given a printout of that?
I can answer that one for you, the only one I can is one of the...
I said I wanted to get them all on the record, and then I'll reread them if you want, so you can address them.
Well, you're going to have to read them individually each time, because you're not going to remember them all, if you're going to read out a bunch of them.
Yep. Lastly, were you ever given a printout of the unified emails, and is it true that you can personally access the webpage using those logins and passwords that were on that printout? So, the first one was, uh, was it ever suggested? I think you said, yes, it was suggested. Second, uh, if it was ever suggested, why wasn't it implemented?
I'm working on it.
What do you mean, working on it? Like, it was suggested, I believe, months and months and months ago. Like, it was suggested, I believe, months and months and months ago, and there was some resistance.
It was suggested and-
Could you tell us the nature of that resistance? Like, why wasn't it just said, yes, this is the way most other towns do it, we're going to use unified emails?
Because it takes time for people to get their new emails out there, and there was some pushback from some of the people that work down here on having to give up their old email address to start with. So, yep, if you, I guess I could be a tyrant and say, as of this date, and say to everybody, you will be using such such an email address. Reggie alleged to it, he's very full aware of it when he mentioned that, that that was something that Pat Garso brought to us when we started the website. And that's when we actually got, and I'm the least tech guy that you ever wanna meet, but from my understanding of it is that that's when we purchased our own browser, not browser-
Domain.
Domain, thank you.
Yep. So, that's easily solved, you just forward from your personal email to the new email. In other words, you check off one box and any email that goes to your old one will get forwarded to the new town official one.
But those people have to be able to want to do that. Or we would have to, as a Town Board, pass a resolution that that would be the only one that they're going to be allowed to use.
Right, but because it's inconvenient doesn't mean that you shouldn't obey what is standard practice or possibly the law. In other words, these are town records and they're required to be stored in a place that is secure, and they should be foable. So, the next question is-
If need be, it's my understanding, they are.
So if somebody submits a foil request saying, I would like to go about the email on December fifteenth?
Yeah, it wouldn't be me pulling it up, but it would be our tech service pulling it up.
So those get addressed by going into the person's personal email and trying to find them? Like, how does that, how would that even work as far as?
What you're calling a personal email is one that they use here at work.
What do, from foil requests, I'm the one that gets the foil requests. I have SFtownclerk@charter.net, that's mine. The one that was set up by Mr. Garso does not work.
Well, the distinction is that the unified ones are stored on the webpage server that you own. The personal ones are not stored there.
That's not my personal, I got my, I have a personal email as well, which I don't use for work, and I don't give out.
It may be different.
Well, my personal, I mean, it's not stored on our webpage, which is supposed to be secure. In other words, it's being stored by charter.net.
It's my understanding, Mr. M.D., that the server is backed up. All the computers in here, they're collapsing, okay? That's way beyond my comprehension on how all that works. And I'm learning because of what we're going through right now. We have a new computer tech security firm that is going through and we may end up even getting, doing away with that great big server back there and utilizing theirs before this whole thing's said no.
I think it's really important to understand the distinction that the unified emails provide a place for them to be stored as public record. When they're at, one of them's at charter.net, one of them's at spectrum.net. Those are out there and those are not secure.
Lisa's already, yep, Lisa's already talked to us about that, that is a change that we're trying to make, okay?
Okay. And were you ever given that printout with the unified emails and passwords associated with them?
As far as I know, what she is gonna do when they get done is they will have a whole binder that they will give us.
No, I'm asking in the past, because over and over again, it's been said, nobody can get on the webpage to access it, to put up the agenda. That due diligence was being done in order to get that agenda up in time, but we couldn't do that because nobody had access. But, in fact, if you have that printout with all the unified emails and the passwords associated with those emails, I believe that you can access the webpage via those things that you chose to do.
Let's be clear, okay, because Mr. Facto said on the record that you were not able to reach those. I never said that.
I don't think so.
The website, the website has been there, and there are people that utilize it.
Can you clarify that? Like, are you saying that people can log on and add things to the webpage?
I don't think it adds things to it, but the webpage, the way it is right now, if they wanna access our webpage, they're able to go on there and look at it.
I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't believe, if I'm understanding your question, that they can go on there and ask, put something on as far as their question onto the webpage itself. But I have had them always, if they have questions, utilize my Outlook mail, which is my SSsupervisor@outlook.com, which is published on a lot of cards. And it is on the website, and my phone number is on the website. It's on the work of the docs, it goes down instead of across, but it's there.
No, my question is, do you personally have access to the webpage to change things? And do you realize if that printout was given to you and instructions were given saying, you know, you can access the webpage via any of those unified emails with these passwords that were printed out, and I believe given to you, you're saying that you don't know that, you don't remember that?
We don't have it.
You don't have a printout of these unified emails and the passwords that can access?
To my understanding, the best of my understanding what you're asking me, I don't have it.
Thank you.
Well, that's kinda funny here, I'd like to show you something while you're talking about that.
What's that?
Is there any more?
What is it? I can't see, but, this is the list of the unified emails?
Yep.
Thanks.
Can I, can I just clarify, Kevin, what I said? The statement I had made is that I've been on the website, you know, our website developed by Mr. Garso.
Yep.
And the statement I made was, on that website presently, there's not names of elected officials or their phone numbers or their email addresses. That's what I had said.
There are some up there, they're not, you're saying that there are none?
I couldn't, I couldn't access any of it, to be honest with you.
And like I said, it reads fine.
Bruno, have you been on it yourself?
I've tried.
You've tried and had trouble as well.
Vertical instead of horizontal.
No, but that's what I had said.
Yeah.
To clarify that.
There are two or three names and phone numbers on there.
They go-
What happens de facto is, if a town resident has an issue and they go to the website to see how can I resolve that issue? Oh, I wanna know about my assessment, or I wanna report a dangerous intersection. They can't write an email to whomever and say, hey, I wanna report a dangerous intersection, for instance. So what they have to do is call in and give it. So now there's no written record of that. So if they're told something on the phone, like, oh, we'll take care of that, and then there's a mix-up, and a month goes by and it's not addressed, there's no written record of the original complaint or the original concern.
Right, and let's, they email me.
So then they have to call back and say, hey, this isn't done. And then somebody says, oh, you know, sorry, we'll take care of it. And if, God forbid, it doesn't get done, then they go, hey, look, I wanna send a letter to somebody, I'm mad enough now. But now it's three months later before the first written documentation of this is being presented because there's no access to this.
Can I, can I just interrupt you for a minute? For the past four or five months, we've been talking about websites. They're doing something to correct the website, so why bring all this up now when you know that they are doing whatever they can to correct it? It will be corrected next month, maybe, is that what you said? That everything will be corrected. Why bring up things that we, because there's nothing that can be done in the past, let's look at the future.
The reason I'm bringing it up is so that it's going to get hopefully addressed, so.
It is to be addressed, they talked about it.
Did you, did you get the handout, Mr. Facto handed out earlier?
I don't, no, he was here, he come in after he got done talking about it.
That's answering ninety-five percent of what you're asking us right now.
So you're committed to making the next website file compliant?
Yes. ADA compliant and everything else on it.
Excellent, thanks.
You come in after you get done talking about it.
Yep.
Internet?
What's that?
Internet?
No, that was it, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say something, um, like you said, the festival was nice, it was really a good thing, the kids enjoyed it. Just the one thing is, like you said, you had seventy-five to two hundred people there in porta potty. I mean, we oughta think about putting bathrooms around the parks.
We've discussed it.
We've discussed it.
You know, because Mr. Facto didn't think that was a good idea. Well, I think it's probably something that we had to do. But we're looking at that, that's why I put, and he'll yell at me if I tell you how much I put in a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year. Another thing was, I know Barb had a sign up for the festival there, it was just a little political sign they taped up. I mean, I've asked for signs before, I didn't want a thirty thousand dollar sign like the fire station has. I'm asking for a three hundred dollar, you know, letters on the flip-up sign that sits out front, that you can advertise stuff with. I mean, it'd be pretty simple, you could advertise the public meetings, the park, things like that with a little flip-up sign. You know, like a couple hundred dollars, you know? It's not, you know, thirty thousand dollar thing that you have to buy. So I mean, it's just something simple to think about. I'd like to bring that up, by the way.
The flip-up sign, I don't know what you call a flip-up sign, but-
Well, just a little stand-up sign, like you see a little restaurant when they're advertising their meals for the day.
Same kind.
You know what I mean, just like-
You mean, do one like for, buy one for the festivals, or?
Buy one for the town, you know, just one of the public meetings, the public meeting every month, you put it up there, this is the day the public meeting is. That would be due diligence to advertise it.
Yeah, no, but how you gonna change what you're writing on the flip-up sign?
They're interchangeable letters.
Well, that's the problem, is that we discussed those, and we had, we went through three of them at the fire station from the wind blowing them over, or the wind blowing the letters away, and you can, you can buy the letters again, but you don't get, we'd end up with ten N's but no A's.
Well, I mean, something better than that, at least you're trying, you know what I mean? I mean, you didn't have anything for the festival, I mean.
I put it in the budget this year, because we did have some unallocated fund reserved that needed to be spent. And that was part of the capital improvement project. That I, I know Mr. Facto had asked for that, and that people have been asking that for a long time. Even though it's a big expense upfront, okay, like you're saying, thirty grand, right?
Well, it's a little extreme, I think we all need some of that lights up and all that stuff. Like, you gotta have the flip-up boards, you gotta change the letters and put the blast back down.
Then somebody's gotta do that.
It doesn't take that long for the letter to, I mean, you could probably have somebody volunteer to do it. I mean, I'd come down and volunteer to switch the letters, I mean, if that's what it comes to, I mean.
Yep, and if we buy those, we'll see how long they last, but all I'm saying is-
I've seen them, they're in towns all over the place still, so.
But normally, what they do is they put up, just like the school did or what the fire station did.
I mean, it's extreme, then you're paying electric bill and you're doing all these other things to have that sign there when all you need is a simple sign. I mean, it's just not, it's not something that needs to be expensive or extreme.
I'm gonna say if they don't, just to be devil's advocate, not that I'm hammering you, but just to be devil's advocate, if they don't read the sun and they don't read the press, and they don't look at the website, and they don't look at that Facebook.
Have you seen the press?
Because it was all, it was all over Facebook, then they're not gonna read the sun.
Here's the other thing, I mean, Facebook is another thing, I mean, who runs the Facebook page for the Town of Scotty Falls? I mean, that could be updated more often, I mean, I haven't seen it updated in forever. Mr. Podgird moved out, he doesn't even live in the Town of Scotty Falls anymore, so.
Yes, he does.
Well, his address is Plattsburg, and he lived right at the street from here.
His mailing address, maybe.
I don't know where he lives now, but I mean, if he's the one running, then somebody needs to pass it on and move it on to someone who's current. Because he's in the legislature, he's not even doing with the town here itself. So he's up to the county level, I mean, somebody needs to take a step up and do, you know, advertising with these things, I mean, it's simple little things.
Why don't you give some pricing on the different type of signs and bring them in?
Sure, I'm not a problem, I could do that, yeah. The other thing is, I mean, Silver Street needs to be fixed, that water tank up there is just an eyesore, it's not working, and the water line's not working. And River Street is another problem that, before you start expanding on to Rickson Avenue and doing these other things, maybe you should fix Water Street or River Street and save that water instead of buying that water, because it's treated water that's getting wasted on the ground, that water could be supplying Rickson Avenue. Let's start small and get that fixed before we start expanding to something else. And then like the Silver Street thing, I mean, that tank's been inactive for I don't know how many years, since they had the nine eleven thing that we had to change it over back in two thousand and one. So I mean, it's been a long time running, and that thing hasn't worked since day one. So I mean, that's something that needs to be looked at and invested in, because Plattsburg is getting bigger, and you can't, you know, rely on Plattsburg to supply with water. We need to look here in our own town to get water. We have a lot of land, we should be able to drill wells and supply some of the town with water. I mean, that's a commodity that's getting harder and harder every year. That's something you gotta invest in, because the price of it isn't going down, it's going up.
Okay, so to answer your question, the Marshall Water District is inclusive of?
Right, you just said it's a yearly contract, so.
I don't know, I'm saying, as far as taking care of what you're talking about, and you said throwing water on the ground, why don't we take care of that before we go up there? We can lock and chew gum at the same time, and basically, that's what we're doing, is the-
If it costs more than you expect, then that, that, that problem's gonna be fixed if it gets fixed. Other than that, we're just wasting money, taxpayer money, buying treated water and pouring it underground. And then you wanna try to set up another contract with Plattsburg to purchase more water? I just don't see the fattibility of it, the, there's no, no future in it. I mean, you're just relying on somebody else to supply you with water. I mean, there's no future in your town when you're relying on somebody else to supply you.
Well, unfortunately, that's the facts that we find ourselves in, unless we put our own chlorination plant back in, hire somebody to run it, and fix the wells that we have up there.
If you have a problem with your water now, then you have to hire up the Plattsburg or have them come fix it.
So we have a maintenance and operation, operation and maintenance contract with them, so.
But again, you're paying for that, I mean, it's not something that's free, so. I mean, if you're thinking about investing in the future, you should invest it in getting somebody in local in town who can do the water project and work with the water and the treatment plant. And have that one person committed to that job, and that's-
And it's all right for you to say that, Jason, but when I go to the people that have to pay for it, that are in that water district, that you're suggesting that they put out money for a brand-new water?
Well, I'm not saying invest all of it at once, that's where we don't just jump into it, we do a little at a time.
That's what we're working on, first of all, you don't have anything if you don't have the infrastructure.
But you're already-
Listen to me, the pipes were put in the ground between nineteen fifty-three and nineteen fifty-six, which they were supposed to last between fifty and seventy-five years, okay? Those pipes, next year, some of them will already be seventy-five years old, okay? They've outlived their life expectancy. At that point in time, the state, or like you're saying, New York State Health Department or D E C can come in and say, what are you gonna do? Get your pipe fixed? Right now, I've been putting a coalition together for three years to get the project paid for, to get the infrastructure done. Once we get the infrastructure done, because we do have a water supply that is guaranteed to us at this time, then we can discuss putting in our own water back up on-
It's already there, but there's problems with it, there's obviously leaking somewhere, and it needs to be fixed. It's been an ongoing issue.
That's all being addressed in the budget.
You're already talking about Rickson Avenue expanding over into there.
That's a totally, totally different-
But it's not, because then you're saying you have to go down to the town of Plattsburg to buy the water to supply them with the water.
They would have, they would have to agree to the extra gallons per day. Just like Sanro. Exactly, they would have. So, I mean, unless you've got a piggy bank, you can crack open and give it to other people of the Marshall Water District, I don't understand what you want me to do about it, other than taking the steps that we need.
Well, we just keep avoiding River Street, so I don't know why.
We're not avoiding River Street.
It's in the plan, it's a part of the plan.
It's part of the Marshall Water District.
It's been in the plan from the beginning.
Hasn't, nothing's been done.
You have, you know what, you know what I want you to do, honestly, Jason? Come down here when you get a chance, and I will go through all the folders that I've been working on for the last three years to get us to the point where we are and where the funding is to the point where we are right now. I know you're not in the water district, I know that for a fact, but I, I understand your concerns, okay?
It all trickles, it's a trickle-down effect, it all is a pain in the ass.
So let me show you what we've been working on for over three years now.
Again, if it was me and I owned, I was trying to do something with the town, I would've hired a local contract company, Luck Brothers, somebody close by, to come in, you know, Gerro, Gerro's, to come in and blast the ledge out and fix it. I don't, I don't see what the big deal is, I mean, other towns do this all the time, so. You have so much money in the general fund that you can do.
Can't use it.
Can't use the general fund.
You got highway fund money that could be used.
Can't use the highway fund.
It's all gotta come out of the Marshall Water District, it's a special district.
I can use money out of the general fund, just so you're aware, and it has to be paid back within twelve months, okay? So I'm not gonna let my hand write a check that I'm not good for, because I don't have the money to put back in. So that means, again, we're back to funding, back to-
Well, we missed a big fact, because there were lots of grants that were given away ten years ago that nobody went and got, so.
No, none of us was here ten years ago.
Yeah, I know, unfortunately, that's a problem.
Do you realize with the, if this comes true, and when I'm told that it's already there, that that project will be ninety percent funded? Do you know what the average water project in New York State takes right now?
What's it, you're talking every, every year.
You work for a surveyor or something, right?
Yes.
Alright, so- Alright, so from start to finish, do you have any idea what the average project takes?
Depends how big of a town you're talking, I mean, you're talking ten, ten point million dollars.
It's six, it's six point one.
It's a good-sized project, but I don't-
With two million dollars of contingency built, then up to eight point one.
I worked for the town, the town of Titan Road, they just drilled two wells, uh, uh, 'cause they wanna give up the Houston Water Project, to try to go over with these two wells that they drilled in the middle of a clay field, so now they're having problems with that one, so. I see these problems all the time, and I'm just concerned with the town here having the trickle-down effect when these taxpayers can't afford to pay for their water that everybody else is gonna end up paying for. Whether, how many projects you work on, we need to fix the, the problems that exist.
Everybody else is gonna end up paying for it.
Of course, 'cause of, if the water pro, if the people in Marshall can't pay for their water bill, then who end up paying for it?
Marshall Water District people.
They, they just them.
Three hundred and six users will pay for it.
Nobody else would be paying for their water.
But it comes out of the taxpayers, 'cause eventually that money has to come-
Comes out of the district users, my friend, not out of the taxpayers.
So what happens when all that money, when they're, they're owed so much that they can't pay?
Then they have to borrow.
Then they would have to borrow a bond as a, a special district, that's a special-
You'll never have to pay for Marshall Water District.
Well, not necessarily, 'cause I mean, if they ever wanted to expand closer down to where I am, then I would be paying for it, yeah, of course, yeah.
But I mean, right, other than that, three hundred and six users-
And the infrastructure we're putting in now will allow us to do that expansion for a hundred years, it's a hundred-year system.
Well, that's, that's-
It's something that hasn't been done in the last seventy-five years. You know what I mean, if we would, if, if they would've been upgrading parts of these systems over the years, rather than doing them all at once.
We can get on a little water project, but anyway, the other thing was to, to put a gate up at the town highway pit so that nobody's going down there getting sand, because if certain people are allowed to get sand, then everybody should be able to get sand for their driveways. So I think Mike, I think they should have a gate down there, 'cause I think there are people going down there getting sand for their sanders and, and doing commercial work with the, the town sand.
I appreciate what you think, but, hey?
I mean, I'm not gonna stop. I ask for town residents, and I say, go, go right ahead. Right, but I mean, even you're not allowed to give them that access, because technically, it's not, not the town's. Thank you. You know, I, uh- I just think there should be a gate up there to stop everybody, if one person can't do it, then the whole town should be able to. If one town resident should, then the whole town should.
Mr. Newton, did you bring that information on?
But unfortunately, with the, the right-
Those, those uh-
Allowed for town residents, so, and allow other people to access.
Did you have that information?
Would be an overburden of the right of way.
If you wanna try one, I could lend you one, there's no other people that access it.
There's a sale on it, right, you know what I mean?
Running?
No, I can't go down there and get sand for my driveway.
You wanna get a good one?
So, I don't, I just happened to notice it on sale.
I'm trying out right now, I'm trying out.
'Cause yours is solar, right?
I got six of them.
There's other people like that, that they want to choose, that they want, they want.
I got solar down there, and there's no other way you can do it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I have solar on them and everything, and I could lend you one to try out for a week or so down there, a couple weeks.
You got a pretty good memory card too, 'cause I don't think Mike's guys are gonna talk every day, changing memory cards with some lights.